Just said enter something and then press pound. Said if you don't know your number, then press pound.
Awesome. So folks watching at home, apologies. We just got word that it wasn't working, but we think it's working now and somebody confirmed that for us. So sorry about the confusion. Mr. Marsh, you were saying?
Uh, I think I was talking about conferences. So we have conferences that are going on tomorrow from one to five and uh, we expect, like I said, about eighty uh families have signed up to come and meet with with their teachers. Uh, we've also been working, um, I've told you in the past, we've been assessing students approximately every six, seven weeks. Uh, we've had two rounds of those assessments to really start identifying, uh, um, you know, gaps, learning losses, whatever that that may be. Uh, we're just beginning to get enough information to start a trend line. I'd like to get three points of data. And that will start giving us a trend line to really see where uh students are. And I I know you probably haven't seen it, but we can, it actually breaks it down by uh competency, by state competency, and also by student. So we can really drill down and see where uh students are. Uh, that also give us um some information on how to support the kid where they are. So we're in that process. Um, as you can imagine, it's lengthy, but it's also very important work. So we know where they are uh standing with specifically reading and math. So that's been ongoing. I think that's about it right now.
All right. Questions about TRS? Ready? Okay. Thank you. Uh, Ms. Gary?
It's gonna sound very similar to TRS, but I did have my notes written beforehand, so. Um, similarly, we have parent uh trimester three just closed out. So we have um our, I'm sorry, trimester one. Yep. Three. Um, trimester one just closed out. So we have parent confer- and we have parent conferences coming up. Thursday is a long day. Um, we have a lot of conferences scheduled. I think the earliest one is at seven AM and the last one ends at eight AM or eight PM. So we definitely have a lot going on. Um, and part of the information that's shared out is not only the progress um as far as the academics that's happening in the classroom, but the same uh form of assessments that they're doing at TRS. Same thing. We have two data points. So we'll work to share that information with families to help identify. I know we talk about learning loss or gaps, but really we're focusing on skills that may or may not have been touched upon in strengthening our core standards. And that's the focus then, what we're looking at doing. Um, we have our book fair going on. That's exciting. The kids love it. Um, they walk by the library every day and their eyes light up. And so they get to go in and make their wish lists. Um, pals donated twenty-five dollars to each teacher to purchase books for their classrooms. So they're very appreciative of that, um, to get more books in the kiddo's hand. Um, we have a, we have a concert scheduled for next week. This week, this Friday, we will be recording it. Um, our numbers at PHS, if you see the dashboard, have been ticking up quite a bit. Um, so we do anticipate that or tomorrow I will be sending out a notification that we will not hold the live um concert. Cause at this time with um our, with the staffing and our numbers going up, um, for us, our concerts are very well attended. It could potentially be the entire school. So we want to make sure that we're mindful of where we are. Um, they're very different for T uh TRS and PA. Um, we get lots of people showing up. So we just want to be mindful of that. So I will be sending out that notification to families tomorrow. We were all set to record it on Friday anyways. So the kids will still have a chance to participate. The fan fair will be there in the building. Um, and then we'll have that to share out to the community. So they'll still get to show off everything they've been practicing. Um, and I think that's pretty much, the last thing is, one of the things that we just like to reiterate and and share with families too, is to please make sure that with our numbers, we're being very mindful of them, that if students are experiencing any symptoms, to please keep them at home. Um, so that's one thing that we want to be able to reiterate moving forward.
Great. Thanks. Any questions about Hill School?
Um, I had a question actually for all of the principals. So it, could you just sort of shed some light on a day-to-day basis? Like, how close has it been? Or maybe it hasn't been close at all in terms of like, we don't have enough staff to open the school today. You know, we don't have enough teachers for this grade today. Like, how, you know, comfortable or uncomfortable has that been? And is there any sort of trend happening?
Um, that's definitely a day-to-day um thing that we manage. Some days are very tight. I think we had one day last week that it was, it was pretty cha- it was very challenging. And we do get stretched very thin with that. It hasn't come to that point where we've had to say we don't have the staffing. But there've been a few recent and that is reflective in our numbers as far as us getting tight on coverage.
Yeah, I'd say we're about the same. We haven't, compared to last year, this is, this is nothing. Uh, last year was uh, you know, pretty, pretty crazy, but um, we uh have not uh felt like we were close yet. Um, you know, the, one of the bigger issues is trying to find subs. You know, you know, you can have, I can, if I go over one staff member out, uh, I don't have subs. And mostly I don't have subs every day. So that means we're shifting people throughout the building. When I start getting up, uh, you know, I'm, tomorrow might be an interesting day. I'm gonna have, uh, you know, six to ten people out in the building. Um, that's getting tough. Uh, but, but you know, the goal is to keep going.
I, I think the trend follows the ebb and flow of our community transmission rates. So uh, when it was higher at the beginning of the year, just following the beginning of the year, I think we pressed it at maybe twenty-five or twenty-six active cases. It was very difficult and there were a few days that were pretty close. Things got a lot better um through most of November, and it was significantly easier. Uh, our numbers are beginning to increase again. We're at twenty as of today. And it's becoming a little bit more challenging. And I think the reason for that is, you know, we're a community school and we have a number of staff members live in the community, have kids in the community. And so, you know, the infection rates are going to be representative of what the community is looking like. So um, one uh, one system we've put in place to help with coverage is um allowing staff who are interested to cover a class during one of their preps. And so, you know, the demand increases in terms of coverage. The uh, our ability to, you know, find subs is pretty static for the most part. And so that has allowed us to meet that demand to some degree. You're welcome.
Anything else? All right, Dr. Morris?
Okay, a couple of things. We had uh Governor Sununu pay the school visit to our key club uh after school on Wednesday to congratulate them on their successful Thanksgiving dinner event. Uh, they cooked fourteen turkeys. Uh, the two advisors, Danielle French and Sally Johnson, were running around the day before trying to defrost fourteen turkeys. I'm not exactly sure what that looks like, but um, from what I understand, it went very well. Uh, and he wanted to acknowledge their community service work, uh, and particularly this Thanksgiving event because it's one of the longest-standing events of its kind in the state. Uh, and he was with our students for approximately forty-five minutes. Uh, we had our Toys for Tots basketball game uh this afternoon. Uh, Toys for Tots is a um charity event that is facilitated by our National Honor Society and those students. Uh, we have our winter concert, which is scheduled for next Thursday, December sixteenth. And uh, unlike Wendy, where, you know, mom, dad, the cousins, the grandparents, everyone shows up for that. Uh, we're more immediate family uh for uh attendees for that. So I don't think we're gonna have the same attendance issues or concerns for that matter. Uh, and we are also going to be administering the Youth Risk Behavior Survey on Tuesday, December fourteenth. And that's a survey that's done in partnership with the New Hampshire Department of Ed, as well as the New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services. And it's completely anonymous and generates important data regarding the degree to which students engage in risky behaviors. And that helps inform our decision-making when we're talking about the systems of support that we need to put in place for our students. Um, winter sports is going very well. It just started, uh, those just started last week with tryouts. And uh, an important note, Adriana Colly, our French teacher, was recently recognized as the New Hampshire Word Language Teachers Association Teacher of the Year. Yeah, and so she'll be in the running for the uh Word Language Teacher Association, the national teacher of the year. So I'll give you an update on, on that as that progresses, but she was um, she's very modest and she really didn't want a lot of fanfare, but it's quite a distinction. And uh, what's telling is when I was talking to her about it, she was a little embarrassed about it because she knows how many quality teachers, word language teachers there are in the state. Um, you know, and she's obviously one of them and she's done a great job.
Awesome. Questions? Okay. Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it. Move on to agenda item number six, consent agenda. It looks like we've got one.
You do? Have um a field trip request that was put in your drive and we had conversation. Oh, this is not. So this was the one from Scott Tibbetto for Holiday Inn, um Marriott Concord Capital Center for the Arts for April seventh to April ninth.
Any questions about this one?
This is an annual trip, isn't it, Dan? This is, I think, I remember the annual.
It's annual if we have students that qualify for it.
And for Melanie's benefit, I think um, not just this one, but field trip approval in general is sort of a tentative thing. They bring it to, uh, this one's maybe not a good example, but things like the environmental camp and whatever, we, we approve to kind of tell them, yes, we're planning on this being fine so that they can, before they go and put all the legwork into figuring everything out. Um, so it, it's not, you know, there is an opportunity for us to change our mind if something were to happen. Not that that's typical either, but just so you can understand how this tends to work. You know, I asked this last year and I can't remember the answer, um, why we would do a hotel for something that's in Concord.
I think uh, there is a component of this where they uh, they get together in ensembles and work on a particular piece of uh music. And it's important that they have the availability to do that. Um, I, I think some groups work throughout the night, to be honest with you. So I think that's a big part of it as well as just the experience. I don't know that they're always in Concord. Um, and so it's just, oh, I think a big part of it's the collaborative nature with other uh music students and music faculty throughout the state.
Thank you. Other questions?
Motion to approve? Oh, okay.
Second, provisional approval?
I'll second that.
Any other discussion, questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close? Extentions? Fantastic. All right, number seven is gifts and donations. I think we've got nothing.
The Wendy would know that uh pals also donated uh twenty-five dollars per human teacher for our book fair also. Also, each human teacher was able to uh purchase twenty-five dollars worth of books for their classroom, which was awesome.
Thanks for sharing. Thanks pals, as always. Uh, so that brings us to agenda number eight, media, the meeting, the media business. Um, A, our first item is Ms. Raymond, who is um Allenstown School Board member. So you've got the floor. Yeah, absolutely.
All right. Thank you, Andy. Um, first, let me say thank you for adding me before policy. As much as I love policy, I only want to deal with Allenstown. So I appreciate that. So I, I know you've got a new board member, but for those who don't know me, I am Chris Raymond. I am the Allenstown School Board Chair. So appreciate having me on your agenda tonight to discuss the Pembroke Academy decision-making just around your COVID response plans. And so the ask and discussion is to just have the high school considered separately from other Pembroke schools in your COVID response plan. So we've asked this in public comments. We asked it in the AREA committee meetings, most recently at the November tenth AREA committee. So therefore Andy just recommended that sending town school boards can be put onto the Pembroke School Board agenda, which is why I'm here tonight. So again, thank you very much. So in that November tenth AREA, um, Andy had given a summary that you all are making decisions based on CDC, AAP, New Hampshire DHHS. Um, the governor has clearly stated COVID response plans are local control. National organizations such as CDC, the AAP, they've got recommendations that are one size fits all for the fifty states. One of the concerns we have is we're hearing from administrators that the mental health in our children is seeing critical behavior levels that are just gonna impact all the way into their adult lives. So we just, we have to get these kids back to the normal they experienced prior to March of twenty twenty. So mask wearing is not normal and I don't want it to become the new normal. I will also add that Allenstown schools, we've had mask optional for this entire school year. Our case counts have not gone exponentially higher than other SAU fifty-three towns where masking is mandatory. So I, I fully understand the numbers in COVID cases in children continues to get a lot of media attention. The numbers are increasing, but I just ask that as, as things settle down, cause I know we're going into another surge. But as things settle down with COVID cases waning, um, or some government agency finally calls this thing an endemic that we have to live with, that you just give consideration to the COVID response plans and sports and social functions and everything associated with Pembroke Academy separately from the other Pembroke schools. I'll stop there. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chris. Appreciate you coming. Um, and you know, anybody else that might be listening at home, we certainly are happy to have our, our Sunday town boards come and discuss anything with us. Um, I'll open it up if there's anybody that has comments or wants to ask Chris any questions. Uh, you said you had a statement? If, if you feel that was appropriate?
Sure. I just um, I just wanted a moment to like gather my thoughts and I did prepare a statement because I was not part of the school board at the time when the mask policy went into effect. I came in pretty recent. So basically, I'll just read from my statement, but I've been working on gathering my thoughts about the masks the past couple of weeks. I'd like to take a minute and share my experiences with everybody. I work on the front lines. I'm a registered nurse and I work in a local hospital. I take care of COVID patients. What I've been witnessing the past few weeks is nothing I could have ever imagined. I'm watching nurses cry in the break room. They say what they see now is nothing what they saw before. They're burnt out. They're tired. They don't believe what they're witnessing. They said they don't really think about it till they have a moment to sit down when they drive into work or when they're driving home. These days, it's not twelve-hour shifts. It's more like sixteen to eighteen hours. What I've been witnessing with my own eyes is scary. I've seen young patients, healthy people, runners who take nothing more than vitamins on a daily basis. I've seen them maxed out on supplemental oxygen where there's nothing left that can be done other than invasive procedures to help them breathe. I've seen their eyes open wide in fear as they struggle to breathe. I try to silence the alarms that are going off for low oxygen levels because I find that the constant beeping stresses them out anymore, even more, and then they can't breathe. If you've ever gone fishing and you've caught a fish that's jumping around on the ground gasping for air, that's kind of what it looks like. It's a helpless feeling not being able to quick somebody, fix somebody really quickly. It's heartbreaking to hold their hand when they're calling out for their spouse that can't be there and be in a COVID room. It's heartbreaking to leave a room because you have four or five other patients that need you and you don't want to leave that person because they're scared. I asked one of the doctors Sunday night what he would say to a room of people who want to take away a mask policy for kids in a classroom. Invited me to a three AM lunch on Monday morning to share his thoughts. He said, and I quote, "This time is different. These are young, healthy people averaging twenty to fifty years old. They're very sick. They're sick longer this time. We didn't see this before." He said, "Today we have eighty-three people in the hospital with COVID. Nineteen are on ventilators. We have fourteen ICU rooms. That's the reason we created a makeshift ICU unit on your floor because we have nowhere to put them. We have patients in the hallways and we're surging patients wherever we have space right now." He said, "I don't ever remember a time before when we had to divert ambulances every other day to other facilities." He said, "Approximately thirty percent of the new cases are children under eighteen and we simply just did not have that before." If I were in that room, I would say, "Keep your mask policy, wear your mask to the grocery store, wash your hands often. If you're not vaccinated, think about it. Talk to your doctor about it." What we do in our local communities does indeed trickle down and affect our bed capacity within our hospitals. If you have a car accident and you need a bed and there isn't one locally, that's really tough on the patient and the family to be out of state. If your child needs their appendix removed and we don't have a bed, that's harder on everyone. He said, "To pass along the next four to six weeks, he believes are gonna be the rough, are going to get rough and tough. But if we all do our part and keep our layers of mitigation in play in our communities, we'll get through it faster. The cases and hospitalizations and death will go down. And then maybe at that time, things can get reevaluated. On a personal level, my number one priority is keeping our schools open with children learning in their classrooms as safely as possible. Thank you."
Thanks. Anybody else? I, I had written up a statement, but to be perfectly honest, I couldn't get my printer to work, so I don't have a copy for Sandy. So I'll make it shorter anyway. Um, I just want to clarify, uh, I've said a lot of times and I said it, you know, at the AREA meeting. Um, I'm an IT guy. I'm not a medical person at all. And so I feel like the only responsible choice I have is to look to people who do do this for a living. So Chris is exactly right. I've looked at CDC and AAP and HHS for recommendations. Um, I will say, as much as, yeah, I'm happy that those three are in agreement. That's something that we didn't necessarily see last year when the conversation was in school versus out of school, um, which made it challenging. It's been easier for me this year because those three agree. Um, and talking about, you know, local decision-making, I would say personally, I give more weight to the HHS recommendations right now than to the other two. Um, and the way that HHS reads, and I actually had the quote and I couldn't print it. But what HHS is saying is they recommend universal masking um when the community is in substantial spread. I know that every county in New Hampshire is in substantial spread. Um, I believe every town is, but I'm not certain about that. Um, so to me, the first step in reevaluating this, and I believe this is the decision that we made and how our um, policy currently, if you want to call it that, is laid out, is that when the HHS numbers, when the state, the local numbers, and we defined, we did define local as Merrimack County, um, because we send kids to PACE and we have sending schools. Um, but when those regional numbers dip to what New Hampshire says is not substantial spread, that's the point where, for me, and I believe what we voted in here, the conversation opens back up. Um, so I think, I mean, again, I'm just doing my best here, um, but I think that putting the emphasis on HHS and their matrix rather than on um AAP or CDC is kind of the middle ground that I can come to as far as trying to be local. Um, and I would definitely say I don't completely disagree with the notion that PA is different. Um, I'm not sure, you know, the net-net of that difference. Um, obviously, students at PA have had longer to get a vaccination if they so choose, which is definitely a positive. Um, but again, the population is much larger and comes from a much wider area, which kind of plays things in the other way. When I start thinking about stuff like that, it pulls me back into, I'm not qualified, you know, to do that. So I have to look back at the experts. And that's, that's what I'm trying to do. So that's just to kind of let everybody know where I'm at again. That's what I'm doing. And I hope that, um, like Melanie said, I think everybody knows going into winter, the numbers are gonna go up again. Really hoping that the next time they dip, they dip for real and they dip for a long time. Um, and when I see those numbers go down, I definitely want to have that conversation again. So I guess I'll stop. Go ahead.
To echo some of those comments, um, I have been advocating, I think since I joined the board, or at least since I attended my first AREA meeting, that um, pretty much anytime the school board, the Pembroke School Board takes an action that affects Pembroke Academy, that we consider Pembroke Academy separately from Free River School and Pembroke Hill School. And I think that that would be perfectly, a perfectly appropriate approach to take with respect to the pandemic. Now, having said that, I don't think that considering it separately would change the outcome at all. It certainly doesn't change my opinion on what our policies should be. But as we move forward and the next time we're in a position to evaluate what to do next, hopefully when the numbers start waning, as you mentioned, Chris, the day's gonna come. It really, it's gonna come. Um, you know, I'm open to considering different treatment for the different schools for the pandemic as I am very open to that approach for, you know, non-pandemic related topics. They're very different environments with different attributes, and I think that they should be treated um separately as appropriate. Um, but the bottom line is, you know, for me, I still think that the guidance is clear as Andy just summarized. Thanks.
Anybody else? Dean? Okay, um. Yeah, I guess I, um, Chris, if you have anything else that you want to add, go right ahead. I would just, I would say, I guess I would close out by saying, um, you know, we, we definitely hear you. And, and that's the thing that's, you know, it's tough all the time, you know, when, when you have a conversation that's lasted a year and a half or more, um, and, and you consistently have, you know, decisions that you might not agree with. Um, but I can say personally, I can't speak for everybody here, but I can say personally, every email I get, everybody that comes and speaks, if you feel like you're not being heard, that stinks. But I promise you, I read every email, I consider every email, and I, and, and I'm listening. And I think, I think that everybody here is. Um, you know, we're in a position where we're the ones that ultimately have to make these decisions. I think we're all doing the best that we can. Um, but I, you know, I can't make you trust me, but believe me, I'm, I'm listening and I'm considering. I think, I think we all are. So, you know, we appreciate you coming. Yep, thank you. You guys want to allow, uh, there's another public comment section at the end and we can allow um a response then if you'd like. And we're almost there. We don't have a whole lot left. Yep. Um, okay, so that'll bring us to eight B. Officers and committee chairs. So this is gonna once again be challenging since we don't have everybody in attendance. Um, but we currently have an opening on the AREA board. Um, we're supposed to have three of those and we currently have Amy and me.
Sorry to interrupt, but before you get that far down in the list, um, is it possible to discuss replacing Anne on the SAU executive board, even though she's not in attendance? We do have a majority of the board here and I think that it is appropriate to put a different person in that position.
Yeah, I mean, we have a couple of things highlighted and read here, but uh, really there's only one that we need action on. Anything? I don't think there's anything that says we can only do this once a year. So if there's anything that anybody wants to discuss right now, we definitely can. Um, so let, let's look at AREA first and then we'll come back to exec board. Um, so currently it's Amy and myself on the AREA board. Um, this is infrequent. Um, I think it's generally three times a year unless somebody asks for an extra meeting. There is a chance, um, actually, I should have had Chris explain it. Um, but there is conversation regarding opening, opening the AREA agreement, which would, uh, there's a formal legal process for doing that. And if that were to be enacted, um, it would probably up the number of meetings um for
Couple of years.
At least in these, yeah, for a couple of years. So, so I say it's rare, but it's, you know, it's infrequent meetings, but it's entirely possible. So I say it's rare, but it's, you know, it's infrequent meetings, but it's entirely possible that that changes soon. So.
Also, I think if someone is in that position and, and it becomes unmanageable, we can revisit.
Yeah, yeah, definitely, this is, this is fluid, I mean, I think we should try our best to keep, you know, steady attendance at these with a single person if we can, just for continuity sake, but especially on AREA because there's three of us. If we need to switch out every once in a while, I know that I've had times where I've been overwhelmed with all the different things that I'm doing, and if somebody needs to tag out for six months, I don't think that's a problem. So I guess, since Amy and I are already on it, I would ask if, if either of you are interested, or if you just want to play rock, paper, scissors.
I'm fine with it unless, you know, it's something that you want to commit to.
Um, I'm fine either way, other than I kind of don't really know when the meetings are and I need like six weeks to start requesting those days or when those meetings are.
Maybe the next one is in, in January, but Patty, I don't think there's a date set yet.
Yeah, I think eventually this might actually be a good one for you because usually these dates are scheduled like six months in advance.
Which is fine, if it's six months in advance, I can request up to a year, but it's hard if it's less than that, six weeks.
And it probably will be at this point in time.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I'm not clear on whether the meeting is going to be rescheduled, that was canceled, but the meetings are on the calendar for the year, so the next regularly scheduled meeting is on the calendar, I'm just not sure about the interim.
Thank you. So then I guess with that for now, I'll nominate Jean. Plug sap.
Sure.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion?
Not really discussion, but just to clarify that Kathy says the AREA Committee has been rescheduled to January twelfth. Well, thanks. Six PM, January twelfth, six PM, January twelfth, AREA, A R E A.
I don't see, I'm in the drive, I don't see it, but.
Oh, and that's one thing that we should double check on Patty because I still don't see the AREA folder in my drive. If you can have Kathy check on it and assuming this vote goes, actually, I think Jean already sees it, so.
Yeah, I see it.
Actually, I don't either because I was in the folders today and.
Will Melanie see it if she's not on the committee?
Or no.
Yes, I'll just save, throw us all on there then, if it doesn't matter. Okay, any other discussion? All in favor of appointing Jean to the AREA Board? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or extensions? Okay, cool, one done, and do we need to take a vote to officially rid ourselves of the PACE Board? Do we want to wait and make sure that?
I, I still do not want to do that yet until that is resolved, and it is not resolved.
Yeah, we'll leave it alone. In case anybody's wondering why we're saying that, Pace Academy has closed, but the official closure of Pace Academy as an entity will not happen until if the town votes at the school meeting in March by a two-thirds vote, a two-thirds majority to officially dissolve the school. So for now, we'll keep it on here, but there aren't any meetings. So Amy, you wanted to talk Exec Board, we did get a notification before our last meeting that Ms. Bond was not going to be here for that meeting or for any meetings in the month of December. So I don't think we have a meeting between now and then, but it's probably still prudent to put somebody else on here as other folks on that board have also expressed concern about attendance. So if anybody has an interest, I would, but with budget, I, I can't commit to another thing. So if anybody has a particular interest, let me know.
I'm not going to say I have a particular interest, is not how I would phrase it, but I think it's important for the Pembroke School District to have someone who attends regularly. And so if Jean or Melanie doesn't do it, then I would do it.
I also think it's important to note, and this is the same with the AREA one, just because you're not the official rep, you can still certainly attend any of these things, so if people that are not on these committees and haven't been before want to go and see what it's like, or just, you know, keep their finger on the pulse, I would certainly encourage you to do that. And then if we do have somebody that can't make it, a rep that can't make it, then at least we've got somebody there that can bring us back some information for our board reports too. Anybody else want to fight Amy for it?
I guess I'm.
I'm okay with it.
You're okay with serving in that role, Jean?
Yeah.
I nominate Jean.
I feel like you're on a lot of things, Jean.
Well, because, you know, my social life, right?
Right, right, this is true, okay. So then, then I'll second Jean, he's okay with it. Any other discussion then? Okay, all in favor of appointing Jean as our SAU Exec Board rep, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, is there anything else on this sheet that anybody wants to hit quick while we're in the zone? Okay, then we will move on. Eight C is our budget update. I think that tonight will probably be a bit less in-depth than we've been doing normally as we have had a regular agenda and most of the changes that are represented in the packet tonight represent the list of reductions that we were presented last time. So you'll see, you know, a fair number of yellow that indicates changes from last time, but most of those are, are the things that we already knew about. But I think there are a few that are different, so I'll let Patty take those.
Sure, so I think we got all of the cuts, Amber and I both checked. One other change that I would draw your attention to is on page thirteen, and it's aid salaries, you'll see a couple of highlights. And that was, we just caught a para that was being paid under the wrong account code, so the para was in Three Rivers and is actually working at Hill. So it's just a swap.
Okay, so there's no net change.
Correct. On page thirty-nine, we, as a team, talked about the maintenance projects and Josh gave us the amount for just the asbestos abatements. Those are really the critical items that we keep in those account lines and we would put on our list, on our cut list, that if we could do maintenance projects at the end of the year, get those couple of things done that he requested, that would be our ask. But for now, we've lowered that to just the, to asbestos abatements. There is a note in the, I don't have the account line in front of me, but the dental rates, the, the rates or the, and the amount of money didn't change, but the note was incorrect. The rates actually went down one and a half percent, I think it was, but the number in the budget was correct, we just didn't update the note. And then the fringes changed as a result of adding an additional pool of increases from the last meeting. And I think maybe a couple of other things that were just incredibly minor, like five dollars. Other than that, just the cuts and those things that I just reviewed should be the only changes in the actual budget. I do have rosters to talk about after as well.
Okay, go ahead.
No, sorry, it was me.
I should use names.
Looking right towards you, but passed you to me. Is, I understand that the budget is extremely fast-moving train and it's not an issue of like, why don't we have this in our drive in advance? But can we get this in our drive? I'm someone who just forgot how to use paper in the past two years. And I'd really like to work with this document on my computer.
It should be there as we speak.
I, I don't have it in my drive.
Oh, okay, and Kathy put it in, she, I thought, the drive and on the website. So if it's not there, I'll make a note, but I, I thought she put it in.
Yep, I can see it. It is, this one got in a little bit later, the last couple of meetings, it's been in there a little bit ahead of time, but honestly, this is a thing, like you said.
No, it's not timing, it's just that like, you know.
Yeah, it's, I can see it in there right now, so.
Can I just clarify, so Pembroke School Board, March sixteen, twenty twenty-one to March twenty twenty-two, twelve, seven, twenty twenty-one. You guys are seeing the budget.
Yep, I've got a PDF and the PDF title is Pembroke Board Budget Packet.
Right, let me.
One two oh seven two one. And I will forward this to the town.
If you have a glitch, I can forward it to your email, just let me know.
So we've done a lot on this and currently, you know, we're looking at one point two million dollars more, it's a four point two seven percent increase with the number that's in here. Patty, other than decisions that the board makes, is there anything else? I know we have some discussion in non-public that may be somewhat related, but is there anything else that we would expect major changes on?
Other than whatever decisions you move, you make moving forward, I think everything is up to date on our end.
Okay, and that was the next question, so, so revenue is the piece that we still need to see.
And I know Amber is finishing that up and we just need to review it before it, it goes out, but it's pretty much finished, I think.
So then I guess the question for the board, you know, before our next meeting, we're going to present to the Budget Committee. So obviously there's still a chance to change things, that nothing is final until, really until March, but, you know, we, we want to have solid numbers after the holidays, so that the MBC knows what they're working with. So I need a sense from the board because they're going to ask me at four point two seven percent, how are we feeling, you know, last night, the three of us were fairly comfortable in that range. So I guess I'll turn to Amy first, but then anybody else?
I'm comfortable.
Okay, any, anybody else?
There was, there was just one comment that I missed from, not the last meeting, the meeting before. We were going over it concerning a five thousand dollar purchase of books for the full classroom.
I think we took those out and they were part of the cuts and we were going to try to use the grant for those.
All right.
That's why I'm not finding them.
Yep, that'll be why.
Okay, I, I mean, I'm, you know, obviously, me saying I'm comfortable with this doesn't mean that I love it, but as I said last time, you know, when we're living in a world with over eight percent inflation, you know, to increase our budget by half that, I think is responsible. I would prefer, honestly, probably to find some more money for salary increases for our people. I think one of the things, one of the challenges that we're going to face long-term, and the police chief talked about it at MBC last week, is that, you know, we're in a position where our salaries are not necessarily competitive. And I think, I think we're doing some this year, but, you know, really, we're kind of, I think these numbers are, we're just not falling behind anymore, I don't feel like we're really catching up. But I think it's another tough year, we don't know what next year's going to bring yet. So I don't want to push it too much and I think overall, four and a quarter, I think is a fairly reasonable place to land. I guess I would say, looking, looking ahead, I haven't seen tax impact sheet yet, but that's going to be an interesting discussion and, and so I'm going to start a little bit of that kind of education right now. It's important that everybody listening remember that we gave back an unexpectedly large amount of money last year, I think it was like one point one million. So even though our budget increase is at the moment about four and a quarter, that's going to look like a very large increase on that bottom right number on the tax impact sheet. And we have to remember that a lot of that is because we underspent so much last year. So whatever that number is, it's going to be kind of an artificial increase and that's a result of the budget cycle being strange. And talking about these numbers and agreeing on these numbers in October and then in March, for a year that doesn't start until after that, we didn't get the final numbers of what we actually spent last year, which would be needed to make these numbers for next year really solid until last week of October. So we're in there. So, you know, I talk at the March meeting every year about the big scary number and I think the big scary number last year said that we were predicting like a seven point something percent increase or whatever it was, and I, I said then, it's not going to be that. It's probably going to be more like three or four percent. It turns out, after the books are closed and all the COVID craziness and all the grants have been, you know, ironed out, that our tax rate went down last year. So that wasn't expected, and so when, when we go up this year, we're, we're not just going up from where we predicted we were going to be last year, but we're actually going up from much farther down. So it, I'm, I'm sure that tax impact sheet number on the bottom right is going to look big, but I think everybody needs to keep in perspective what that actually means. And I'll do my best to bring that information to the meeting and explain it to folks. That's it, I babbled too much. Anything else, I'm, I'm going into the meeting next Thursday feeling like I can tell the Budget Committee that the board is pretty comfortable where we're at, that we don't have any plans for any other major cuts, barring anything unforeseen. Patty, is there anything else you need from us?
If you, well, I guess you could wait till after non-public to make a motion to move an amount forward to the MBC. Because potentially there could be a change, so if you want to wait until after non-public.
Yep, and then you said you had something on rosters?
Yes, so there were a couple of questions about grade levels taught, and I think that was a really good thing for us to add to the rosters, so we did go through Jean, I think we were talking about that and add in the grade levels that people teach at. So we just put those in, and then we did have that para that was in the wrong place, a para in Three Rivers that was supposed to be at Hill, and we just switched her into the right account code section. And I think those were pretty much the only changes, just titles.
Okay, any questions about that? Okay, we'll move on to eight D, Hill School renovation, I don't have anything planned for this topic, I just wanted it on here. I don't know, Patty, who should I reach out to to find out what this board's next steps are? I feel like time keeps slipping away, we need to get on top of this, but I don't know what the next thing is that we need to do. So who would you recommend I contact to get that ball rolling?
Do you mean in terms of committee work?
I don't even know.
Yeah.
You know, we, we have the recommendation, you know, we've got some loose plans. I don't know what the next step is, is it to, is it to contract with an architect?
Yes, this board needs to make the decision, you know, you may want to have a warrant, which you'll need to decide pretty quickly. I think I had shared with you that that was Deerfield's first stab as they put a warrant article on there to get a sense from the community of, okay, are we serious, do we want this? If so, let's start a trust fund so that we can hire, do an RFP, hire an architect, get a CM to come through and, and put, put a price to all of this about what it would cost, that's the first step.
Okay, so we need a warrant article to start a trust fund, deposit some amount of money, and there would be language in there that the intent would be to hire a firm, begin this process.
You know, I think it's really late in the season to do much else. So I think if that, if that's your first step, you know, you can go straight to a bond and do that work next year without a warrant article, but it seems that that would be.
No, I think that's great to give input for sure.
Yeah, a sense from the community.
So is that something that you think the Deerfield one was similar enough that we can steal it?
I can drop the language.
Okay, yeah, so if you want to bring that to us for next time, we'll make, not next, next one's a work session, so the first one in January. We'll keep this on the agenda. I guess, quick opinions from the board, are we all feeling like this is the right thing to do?
Yeah, for sure, I've been wondering and also eager to be taking the next steps. You know, personally, I have a student at Hill School and it's, you know, needs improvement.
Accurate. Anybody else?
I think that's what we need to do, so time doesn't slip away and we figure out what we're doing.
Okay, cool, so we'll get that in January and we'll get something written up with good language for March. And then I think that, you know, since March is when budget gets out of our hair, I think that really has to float to the top of the, the list as our main topic that we start using our work sessions for, along with some goal, other goals. So, cool. Jean, you said you think you are prepared with policy? Sorry, is it number nine is policy?
You know, I went through them and we talked to Melanie a little bit about it, and I think, you know, the, the sample policies that are in there, you know, for, let me get to that first so I know what I'm talking about here. You know, we've got the transportation regulations. Um, you know, we've got the transportation regulations as a first reading. Um, and, you know, I, I, I look at these, do they make sense? I, I, you know, obviously not being an expert in these fields, you know, but read through them as carefully as I can to see. What, what they're saying and, you know, it, you know, the transportation policy. Uh, it's pretty much common sense, it's, you know, we, we, you know, if you think back to when we were in school, it was pretty much the same. Um. So, you know, I, I would say that was okay to move forward with.
Yeah, Jean and I talked and I looked over them too and I kind of look at them the same way, not to. Dive deep into the details, but they make sense, you can understand them. It all is kind of common sense, so I was fine with it too.
I think typically the approach that we take, Melanie, uh, you and Jean may have already, um, talked about this. Is to make sure we're looking at both the new school board draft and the current policy.
Yep.
To see if there's anything in that.
We didn't catch anything on that one, yep, that's what we did.
Okay, great, thanks.
Okay, um, quick, um, I asked for a social media, want to be put in there because I wanted to review it before I talked to Josh about. Us possible have, possibly having social media accounts, to be honest, I have not read that yet, so we'll keep that one.
Well, I, I mean, I, I did go through them both, both of them, um, and the, the only thing that I came back with was. Uh, in the section labeled limitation to public comment, um, you know. It almost sounds like. Comment could be possible and I think that's something we all agreed on that there would be no.
Right.
Um, because we don't need that turning into a sideshow, somebody likes something or doesn't like something. Yeah, well, it's just for an informational pushout, so I think that, that's one tweak that just needs to be made to it that, you know, where it states. Uh, unequivocally that there will be no comment.
Okay.
On any social media.
There we go, so, um. I wonder if we want to keep the recommended policy language as it is. And then, you know, when we, for example, make a motion to finally, you know, start the Pembroke School Board Facebook. Account, it would say with no public comment. Um, and the reason being, I could foresee us in limited circumstances doing stuff like a poll. Or, you know, some form of limited. Comment that we would turn on for a specific purpose. And I would want us to have the flexibility to do that, and so I think the way to do that would be to have a policy that allows it. And then do a motion that limits ourselves, so that's just my thinking on that.
Yeah, that makes sense, I, I would rather, um, table it for now, just because I haven't read it, but I, I think, I think I agree with that. Um, the next one, similar, I think we had talked about putting that one on there, um, because. There was language about only Pembroke residents, right, and we wanted to expand that. And I think we specifically wanted to say, there's language in ours. About having to speak to something that's on the agenda, we wanted to take the, remove that language so that the public has an opportunity to speak on. Issues that they may have.
Yeah, and that's what I was, we're talking about BEDH now.
Yep, sorry, should have said.
Um. There, there was an optional in the sample, um. There was an option under provisions for, um, members of the public, two paragraphs basically. Uh, one beginning with members of the public shall limit comment to only items appearing on the current agenda or. Except as otherwise provided, in this policy, members of the public may offer comments on agenda items or upon any other matter of public concern directly relating to the district's. School policy, so that, that was kind of like the option you could get out of that, we, we could choose either portion of that and. You know, that would, like you said, doesn't just limit it to.
So how do, how would we do a motion and say we want the second part of the or?
I would suggest that you not do a motion until you have a, a document in front of you. If someone wants to change, send it to Kathy with the changes and she can, then we'll put it, a clean copy in the drive for the next.
I can do that.
I don't think there was anything else that I saw, Melanie?
Nope, I had the same question that you did, I liked the, the or recommendation.
So, um, we don't usually take action on, on first readings, but it's up to you guys for transportation.
Um, Kathy found today a couple of transportation policies that were actually withdrawn, so if we could just have another meeting, because we want to pull those and look at those, sure.
Okay, so I think the only one that we haven't talked about then is JLCDR procedures for medicine medication.
So, um, Anne had requested, you had approved that recently and then Anne had requested that it go back on. Um, to look at adding language regarding, um, students with diabetes, but the, there actually is already language regarding students with diabetes right below the. EpiPen session, so, so I'm thinking she probably just missed it, so I think you're all set.
I, I agree, is everybody okay with dropping this one? It is very recent, okay, cool, so we'll move that off, anything else with policy before we move on? Yeah, certainly. Okay, um, that brings us to agenda number ten, public comments, again fifteen minutes, three minutes per, thank you very much for your patience, appreciate it. Um, and just name and town again.
Sorry, hi, it's Roxanne Limbo, um, Allentown. Just a quick question for you, um, Melanie, I know that you, um, work for hospital. And, um, you provided some great information and I, I, I thank you for your time and your, your service. I too know people that are in the, um, hospital service and work tirelessly. Um, what I'm hearing is that those that are hospitalized are actually due to the vaccination. Not. COVID. I was wondering if you had, um, numbers regarding that. Could you? Could you find those numbers for us, maybe potentially talk to the hospital like you got the other numbers? And provide that to us for the future, maybe next week's meeting?
So we need to approve, um, you guys okay with Melanie responding if she so chooses?
No, public comment is not meant to be a dialogue, um, public comment is for the public to make comments and then for the board to consider those. Not only that, we've talked about how, um, well, until Melanie joined, uh, no one on the board had. You know, medical training or scientific experience and with all due respect for Melanie's medical training. Um, she's not at the level of someone who would be working, you know, at a high level of the Department of Health and Human Services or.
Is being, uh, used. For the mask mandates here in Pembroke Academy.
Anyway, my input is no. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Andy, the only thing I wanted to say is, um, if you wanted to direct as the chair, within the next sixty days, DHHS is trying to update. They're vaccinated, unvaccinated, so watch the website, they are trying to update numbers on their, their ticker and their clock. So that might be helpful information for the public.
Thanks, appreciate that.
Thank you, I just didn't understand why you could bring numbers saying COVID, but you couldn't provide. More detail of those that were vaccinated in the hospital. That's all, but thank you for your time, I so appreciate it, you'll definitely see me at a next meeting, thank you.
Thank you, anybody else?
Hi, Mark Dumont, uh, down the drive. Uh, Mark Dumont, down the drive, uh, thank you guys for, uh, letting us speak tonight. Um, also, I, I want to thank, um, Allentown's Chair for, uh, coming here tonight and, uh, trying to reason with you guys, um. One thing I want to highlight from what you said, that I feel was glossed over is, um. Allentown has choice for the masks, the masks optional. And, um, I wanted to, I wanted to look at some of the, uh, COVID numbers for Allentown and compare it to, uh, Pembroke. So I'm, I'm reading this off of, uh, the active COVID cases, I don't know if you guys have updated them or not. But, um, as of twelve, seven, twenty-one, Allentown Elementary School, seven active cases. Um, Armin R. Dupont School, I believe that's a middle school, one active case. Now for Pembroke, Pembroke Hill School, eleven. Three Rivers School, four. Um, I hate to point the obvious out, I don't think I should have to, but they're, the town adjacent to us. They have masks optional and they're doing just as good as us, it's kind of glaring right in your face that, uh. The mask, the mask policy, not policy mandate, whatever you want to call it, um, it's not doing anything. Um, the, the other thing.
I'm sorry, I just, I'm sorry, I just got a text that, um. Someone with whom I am a close contact just tested positive for COVID, so I'm going to leave.
So. As I was saying. As I was saying. Their number, their numbers are similar to ours, it's, 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 it's striking, it's right in your, you guys' faces, the masks aren't doing anything. Um, the other thing is, we're not in a state of emergency, no children have died from this in almost two years now, since the pandemic started. And. I don't know why you guys are trying to take it upon yourselves to control, um, community transmission rates when it's not your purview, your purview's education. It, it, it's, it's amazing to just one town over and, and their high school goes to school with our high schoolers. I mean, you, you couldn't get any more obvious and, and you guys glossed over everything she said and she's brought up legitimate concerns, these masks are affecting the children. In negative ways, not just educationally, but mentally, emotionally, um. Learning how to interact with each other, seeing each other's smiles, their faces, their expressions. Um, even as adults, when, when everyone was having to wear masks in, in stores and stuff, you could feel it. You, you, you kind of, when you finally get to take your mask off, you, you, you felt strange, you didn't know how you should be moving your face. I mean, imagine what the kids are going through, I mean, so I'm, I want to urge you guys to like. Make masks optional, so if, so any of the parents that, that want to be more precautious, I'm all for, I'm all for them having their children wear masks. Um, the other thing is, you need to stress, the N ninety-five masks will protect the user, the masks you guys are wearing tonight, they're not protecting you. CDC has said COVID is an aerosol, it's not just spread through droplets, so even Amy here tonight, if she, if, say she had COVID. That mask didn't stop it.
Hey Mark, that's three, but since she kind of interrupted, uh, I'm gonna give you like one minute?
Yep, I appreciate that, I'm, I'm, I'm pretty much done anyway, but, but I just want to, I just want to humbly ask you guys, just to reconsider this. Think about the kids, think about the community transmission rates, how the schools aren't affecting it. And, and, I mean, we should count our blessings that this isn't really affecting the children. And, and, and just think about that, okay, thank you guys.
Thank you. Anybody else before we move on? Seeing none, okay. Move it back to the agenda, all right, number eleven, informational items, we've got some numbers updates.
We do, I need Wendy's help to update, I just realized I forgot to update Hill School. Um, so both Merrimack County and Pembroke are still considered in a substantial, uh, level of transmission. The active, this is as of yesterday, so it does change, but, um, active cases in Pembroke were thirty-eight. Um, the Hill School, when I looked, was December first, numbers were six, so could you just give us the update as of today, do you know?
Today we're at eleven.
Okay, thanks, I meant to look back and get that, um, and then Three Rivers as of December sixth had three, is that still accurate? Okay, four. The problem, these change every day, um, and then PA, I'm not sure if this is still accurate, I had twenty yesterday, still accurate, awesome. Okay, and then percentage of population fully vaccinated as of yesterday was fifty-three point five percent. Um, and then when I looked yesterday on the map, Allentown had thirty-two, Chichester had seventeen. And Epsom had twenty-nine and those are the towns, not the schools. And that's it.
Thank you. Any questions? Um, okay, uh, so we do have, need to go into a non-public session. In accordance with New Hampshire RSA ninety-one dash eight, colon, three, Roman numeral two, uh, small letters A and C, which are. Small letter A is this, the dismissal promotion compensation or disciplining of any employee or the investigation of any charges against him or her. And small letter C is matters which, if discussed in public, would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of the board. I don't know, we'll call vote to enter non-public seven fifty-three, Melanie?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
And, um, yes, we'll get back. Um, sorry, I don't know, anybody's got any action, go ahead while I log in.
Uh, Amy Manzelli joined us remotely, uh, during the non-public, so I'd like to make a motion to allow Amy. To rejoin the meeting remotely.
Okay, second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, or abstentions, cool, welcome back, Amy. Thank you. Okay, um, so, other business from non-public?
I will, uh, make a motion to approve the superintendent's request for five retirements.
I'll second.
All right, um, there was already discussion, so all in favor of approving the five retirement requests, say aye.
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 Any opposed or abstentions? Okay, um, anything else?
If you heard me, I would say aye.
Yep, got it, thank you. Um, anything else for thirteen, Patty? All right, then, next scheduled meeting is. Um, two weeks, the twenty-first, at six thirty right here, um, NBC meeting on Thursday this week. Night at six thirty at Town Hall. Um, or the, the school presentation to the NBC next week on the sixteenth at six thirty at Town Hall.
I just, Andy, just, could we just get consensus at least from the board that your intention is to, um, add the retirement benefits? And then move that budget to the NBC for Thursday as it is?
That, everybody?
Yeah.
So adding the additional monies for the retirement and then going with the number that we have for there, at least for the time being, I'm seeing Amy nodding.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for reminding me. Um, and.
Do we need to motion this budget forward?
I don't think yet.
I think as long as you let them know by consensus, you needed to add something and you haven't voted on the actual bottom line yet, at least then they can get the budget as it's going to be presented.
I'll express to them that we're pretty serious about that number. Um. There was another meeting, I was going to say, but I forgot, no, that's okay, um. Yeah, so NBC Thursday this week and next week, next week's the school presentation, um, that's probably it for now. If there's nothing else, I'll accept the motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor of adjournment at eight twenty-two PM, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions, thank you.
Night, Amy. You're welcome.